Okay. Point out again, did make a slight mistake, so the right answers are now in red. Uh, now to go over the math and the method. We've got a meteor approaching Earth, meteor will fall into some orbit around Earth. This happens because the meteor has a forward pointing velocity, and it gets close enough for Earth's gravity to start acting on it as a centripetal force. So, I would call this an orbit question, the word orbit does show up in the text. So that should be your hint that gravity is gonna act as a centripetal force, causing it to move in a circle. And in space, gravity always causes this, gravity acts as a centripetal force. Rewrite this since uh mental part is in the way. The gravity between the air from the meteor is gonna act as a centripetal force, and that is why it starts moving in a circle. It wants to move forward, it's being pulled down, does both at the same time, just continuously. And since so real existing force always has to play a part of centripetal force, we can set these two things equal to each other, gravity is serving the part of centripetal force. And so this is what I consider the starting point of an orbit question. One thing is spinning around something else in space due to gravity and centripetal force, to its own desire to move forwards. This is what I consider to be the main place to start. And again, kinda talk about my grading process. If there was like a ten point question with this sort of thing, writing down just this is already three points. And you get more points for filling in these specific equations for Fg and Fc on either side. Starting point feel okay? Okay, now, again, this is for orbit. And I'll always try to make it clear if it's an orbit question, I'll usually say the word orbit in it. There will always be one object moving around in a circle, something else in space. Moons and meteors and satellites and things like that. So if this is our starting point, now have to plug in what these things are equal to. So I would consider the next line down to just be putting in the formula for gravity and separately the formula for centripetal force. And so what I wrote next is instead of Fg, write in the universal law of gravitation. Fg equals big G m one m two over r squared. And then Fc, centripetal force, is equal to mass times centripetal acceleration. So the force of gravity, the pull between the two masses, based on how far apart they are, acts as a centripetal force, that's gonna cause the meteor's mass to begin centripotly accelerating around the Earth. Feel okay for next, next step?
Yes.
Okay. Couple things I'll just mention, 'cause I get asked about them occasionally. You do specifically wanna use the universal law of gravitation here, because just m times nine point eight doesn't cut it in space, 'cause you're not on the planet Earth. You're farther away from it. You have to use this, 'cause you don't know how far apart they are. Then, on the centripetal force side, there's two different formulas for centripetal acceleration to fill in as the next part. You should mention, why didn't I mention that? Centripetal acceleration can equal linear v squared over orbital radius, or alternatively omega squared times orbital radius. You just have to pick one of the two based on either what you happen to know or what you're looking for. And in this particular question, we know the meteor's linear speed. So I chose to write v squared over r in place of ac. If you knew angular speed, you could just use the other version instead. And our end goal is to solve for r, 'cause we wanna know how far apart these two things are gonna be. If you were working at NASA, you'd need to know that to figure out what height it orbits at and/or will it hit the planet. 'Cause even if it doesn't hit Earth, you wanna make sure that there isn't gonna be like a satellite or astronauts wherever it ends up. So the thing we're solving for is r. We eventually wanna find out height above the ground. The main thing for right now is r, orbital radius. And I wanna point out again, that is orbital radius. The r in both parts of this, in all of these different formulas, is what I would call orbital radius, the distance from core to core. Because gravity only cares about the distance between center of mass to center of mass. Technically, Earth's pull would be the same if it was the size of a volleyball and you were still the same distance from it. You then fall towards the volleyball, but you know, same distance, it'd be the same gravity. All that matters is distance of core to core, so that's what this r is. This r is orbital radius. And this r is the same exact thing actually, 'cause centripetal force cares about the distance from this object's center to the point it is orbiting around. And it is specifically orbiting the center of the Earth. So this is also still orbital radius, the distance of core to core. If all I ask you for is orbital radius, r is what you're after and then you're done. So r is what we want, it's in two different places, so we just have to get them all together on one side. And uh, I'll do it without plugging in any numbers first, just to show how this happens to simplify. So all I've done for now is just move r squared out of the denominator of the left side and into the numerator of the right. Just multiply both sides by r squared, just 'cause we want all the r's together on one side. And now, the right side has an r squared divided by r. And they're the same variable, it's not like two different radii. So it's r squared over r, it's just gonna simplify to r for that reason. That feel okay? Okay. Uh, I'll point out, if you were using the other version of centripetal acceleration, it's still the same r, but that r's in the numerator. So instead of simplifying to r, it would simplify to r cubed. But it's still the same r. So that's good, that's fewer terms to deal with. We've just got one r, that means we just need to send these other two things over to the other side. And that'll look like G times m one times m two over v squared. And also down there is m. The question though is, which m is that? There's two objects here, we know both, well, actually, there's two objects here, they both have mass. And the question is, which object is this? 'Cause that's gonna affect which one it cancels out with. 'Cause we kind of encountered another situation where something can cancel, as long as this m is the same as one of these two. So to kind of back up a minute, there's two objects here, Earth and meteor, whose mass belongs here?
Meteor.
Meteor. And that's because the meteor is the object that is undergoing the centripetal acceleration. This is the meteor's velocity times the meteor's mass divided by the distance from the meteor's core to the Earth's core. Everything on this side is just the meteor and how the force of gravity is affecting the meteor. So this is the meteor. And I'm gonna be more specific now, instead of m one and m two, I'll write M e and M m. Just to try to show all the cancellations. And as a result, once we bring that all the way into the denominator of the left, that speed here just kinda goes away. Which is good, 'cause I didn't give you a mass for the meteor, you didn't need it. So, after just rearranging everything, I would simplify this down to r equals big G, that constant, six times six, seven times seven, eight, eleven, times the mass of the Earth divided by the meteor's linear velocity squared. And that is this part. Big G times Earth's mass divided by linear velocity squared equals orbital radius. So this is just the same thing with the numbers plugged in. Apologies again, I wrote a six, but shouldn't have, I should've done that. And that should give you an orbital radius of about thirteen million meters. So that is the distance of core to core. And if all I ask for is orbital radius, then you're done. So in fact, I kinda wish I'd rewritten this question to say first, find orbital radius, then find height above the ground, just to treat them as two separate things. This is Earth's core to the meteor's core, and does, we can turn that into a separate piece of information, height above the ground, which is the sort of thing that, you know, NASA calculators would want to know, 'cause you wanna make sure if there's anything else orbiting at that height, you don't want the meteor slamming into it. Or alternatively, if the orbital, well, the way that I found height above the ground is I just take this number and subtract out Earth's physical radius, because radius Earth plus height from surface to meteor is the orbital radius. So to find height, you just factor out the size of the planet. And when I do it correctly, the actual answer, that's about six point eight billion meters actually. That's six point eight meters, million meters above the ground. So, we're safe, I don't think we have anything orbiting at that height. Surprisingly, most things orbit pretty close to the ground, as it happens. So this would probably be fine. If it was orbiting closer, say if this number was smaller, that would make this number smaller. And then, that could be a problem if there was something orbiting at that height. Alternatively, if we reworked this, say if the meteor was just moving slower and we got a, or moving faster. Point is, if this number was even smaller, and say we did this and found that this number was smaller than Earth's physical radius, and we did this and got a negative number, that would mean that the meteor would try to be orbiting within the planet, which just means it hits the planet. And then you just have to hope we don't have a dinosaur situation. So again, type of thing that NASA does anytime they find anything approaching a planet. Does that address any old concerns right now of this one? Okay.
Um, can we go to number twelve?
Twelve?
Back to the test.
Absolutely, that's the submarine, right? No, it's
The wood log.
Wood, yeah, sorry, I write too many of these things.
Um, so on B, why does gravity cancel out, like when it's
Oh, you mean the Gs? Oh, okay, so um, in part B, I started here. The log is floating unassisted. And if you are floating in equilibrium unassisted, the net force on you has to be zero, 'cause you're not accelerating, up or down. And the two forces present here are gravity down and buoyant force up. And that means that the two of them basically are even opposite to each other. Bless you. The weight of the log is going to be its mass times nine point eight. Meanwhile, the buoyant force formula is density fluid times volume submerged object times nine point eight. So what's canceling on both sides is just that there's a nine point eight on both sides. That's all that happened.
Yeah, I think I left out the G on the other side. That's why I was confused. Um, so like, if the wa, if the log is like completely under the water and not floating, in that situation, the Gs wouldn't?
Well, the formula for buoyant force has a G in it regardless.
Right.
Uh, if these are the only two forces, the Gs will cancel out.
Okay.
If these are the only two forces and the net force is zero, I'll say that. And that just implies the object is naturally remaining at whatever depth it's currently at. If it's sinking or ascending, or if there's some third force involved, then that's gonna change things.
Um, what's the unit for impulse?
Uh, the unit for impulse is the same as the unit for momentum, since impulse is just a change in momentum. And that would make it kilograms times meters per second. Which one is the impulse question? Yeah, kilogram meters per second.
I know you went over this in the last class, but for six, could you explain why the angular acceleration is zero? 'Cause I know the velocity is constant, but is it because of the constant fifteen rotations?
Yes, um, and I, I suppose I didn't say the word constant in the text, I apologize for that. My intent here is that the ride is going to spin consistently at fifteen rotations per minute the entire time it's active, and we're just examining it while that is true. So fifteen rotations per minute is the constant angular speed. That said, I did convert it up here to radians per second before using it in anything. So that's the angular speed that I would then use in the following parts. Now for part C, the angular acceleration of each child, uh, trying to prove my point mathematically. Uh, the definition of angular acceleration is change in angular velocity over change in time. And delta anything is always final minus initial, so the only angular speed we have is that fifteen rotations per minute or one point five seven radians per second. If that is staying constant the entire time, the final initial would be the same number, therefore delta omega is zero, and angular acceleration is zero. Which means that the rotation of the entire ride in both children remains constant as long as it's staying at the same speed. So, constant speed, zero acceleration. If it was, if we were instead examining it speeding up at the beginning or slowing down when the ride is over, then there would be an angular acceleration. But just while it's constantly running during the normal operation of the machine, rotation remains constant, therefore there is no angular acceleration. There is still centripetal acceleration, but that describes something different.
Well, the force and torque always be, um, if there's tension, will it always be tension in the y-axis?
Uh, you mean for this one?
I mean when we're solving for F, like force.
Alright, so, in this particular question, uh, the tension in the rope is going to create torque in this flagpole. But specifically, and again, there's no trigon the actual test, so you don't have to worry about doing the trigon test itself, this practice says it's meant to be harder. Um, only the vertical component of that tension is gonna generate torque, specifically because torque requires the force and the radius to be perpendicular. And since the flagpole's horizontal, only vertical forces generate torque. Now, the fact that it's tension here causing this is just situational. So, it's just tension because a rope happens to be doing it. So really, you're just solving for the force exerted, and it just happens to be by a rope. So the fact that it's tension is just a situational word. And uh, initially, uh, this part is just calculating the total clockwise torque caused by the two downward forces, the weight of the pole and the weight of the mass. That's the clockwise torque that the counter clockwise torque generated by the rope has to negate. So, whatever the tension in the rope is in the y-axis times its applied radius, it has to generate the same torque. That gives you the upward pointing force that the rope has to exert. And if the rope pointed straight up, and frankly, whoever built this thing should've just had it point straight up, that'd be the end of it. But someone had to be artistic and set it at an angle, and that just means that the rope actually has to work harder to make sure that its vertical component is enough.
So if the, if the rope was just straight up, would we just have to solve for the force anyway?
Yeah, if the rope pointed straight up, this would be, this number would be the entire vertical component, and then that'd be it.
Okay.
Actually, I'll admit, there's two things here that make this not ideal. Technically, the rope should be applied here and pointing straight up, 'cause that would generate the most torque per force. That'd be the most efficient thing. But then you have to have something above it that it's tied, you know, tied to, so maybe, maybe here, forty-five degrees would still be better. But, uh, only the vertical component generates any torque. Again, not something for the test itself, more of just a thing to remember for reality.
Are the, are the tests weighed the same as the final, or is it different?
The ta, tests as a whole make up thirty-eight percent of the grade. And since there's two tests, each single test is therefore nineteen percent of your grade. The one final exam is thirty percent of your grade. Hold on, let me recheck my syllabus real quick. Yeah, final exam's thirty percent. And since it is basically just test one and two attached to each other, you know, two hundred and ten points, you have to earn two hundred to get a one hundred. Um, it's kinda weighted the same, if I'm being honest. Like it's just twice as long as one single test. Um, and like the syllabus is weighted in such a way that, you know, if you got a fifty on the exam and on both tests, that'd be fifteen. You could still get a D in the class, if you got a hundred on everything else. It'd be a high D, like a sixty-eight, D plus. What?
Computer, first.
Okay. What?
So are
Tests are during lab time?
Tests are during lab time, yeah.
Yeah. So, instead of taking the lab, you'll show up and take the test.
Making sure I wasn't missing it right now.
Uh, yeah, it's this is a study session, that's why it's quiet. Friday? Yes, like, same with labs, you can attend any one of them. The only note though, a bunch of people are planning to show up on Friday, so the room's gonna be packed.
House on the floor, five to four.
Oh.
Zero issue with that.
Bring an easel, I guess. Hmm, classy. I got some people who just show up on Monday to get it over with. 'Cause then, at least for physics, you get the rest of the week off, basically. How's everyone feeling? Anything else on your minds right now?
I need more information. On average, how long did like your students take to take the test so far?
One to two hours. I find that about one hour, most everyone has given an honest attempt at each one, and then the following hour is just anxiously checking everything. Which you're allowed to do, you have the time. Occasionally someone will take the full three hours, but admittedly, and I don't mean this, I don't say this to be mean, an amount, like, when someone does that, an amount of it is usually fear paralysis. Which again, they're allowed. But that didn't happen on, on day or Tuesday.
Thank you.
You're welcome, if somebody else needs anything.